Eight eleven. Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the moment of silence by Mr. Feely? Moment of silence first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, yeah, you're supposed to... I'd like to take a moment, actually. Remember, with all these, with all these sports teams and these high-profile players that our children look up to us, to remember that parents at home are where the real heroes are. And want to take a moment to acknowledge them and thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Evacuation announcement. In case this room has to be evacuated for any reason, we have two exits. One in the back. Go immediately outside. The second exit is to my left, your right. Go out the door, take an immediate left, go down the stairs, and exit out into the parking lot. Roll call, Kathy?
Mr. Feely?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Chairman Neville?
Here. First of all, I'd like to apologize for delaying, for the delay in the meeting. We had a meeting that went a little bit overboard, and so I appreciate your patience.
Over time.
We're, not overboard, but over time. You're correct, okay? We're on number six, approval of minutes. I have a motion for approval of the regular meeting minutes for March 27th.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mrs. Hall and seconded by Mr. Grady. Any discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have, secondly, looking for a motion for approval of the minutes of April 10th, 2012.
So moved.
Second? Moved by Mr. Grady and seconded by Mr. Feely. Any discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Approval of the minutes? Any opposed? John, we don't have any board guests, correct? Any correspondents or communications? Okay. Audience participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak before the board? Okay. Melissa Dumas, could you please come up to the table here? And I'd ask that you give your name and your address, and also just remind you that limited to three minutes.
Okay.
We welcome you here.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Melissa Dumas, and I live at 11 Wagon Road. First of all, I just would like to thank all of you for the time and that you give to the town committed to improving the lives of our youth here today. I am also here today committed to my children, and I'm here to advocate for them in such manner. The purpose of my visit is to bring up again, perhaps, implementation of a policy in order to allow for exceptions due to the redistricting that occurred last year. My daughter, who is five years old, will be entering the school system. I already have two children already currently in the school system, which I'm very pleased with. However, Natalie attends a home daycare, which is out of my district in town. And if she were to attend school, it would provide an extreme hardship for my family. And she has been at this particular daycare provider since she was five months old, and I would really hate to have to switch her out and also acclimate her into the school system here in Enfield. So I would like to try to avoid that at all costs. I had sent an email prior to my visit here to the Board of Ed, and I would just like to thank Mr. Genitis for being the sole board member to provide a response. So thank you, Mr. Genitis. In addition, I do have some ideas and possible solutions in order to address those families that have been negatively impacted by the redistricting. And I would also, of course, like to preface that I do feel that the redistricting as a whole has benefited many families here in Enfield. However, I think that it would show that the Board of Ed, especially this particular Board of Ed, is willing to work with the families here in Enfield and show that they are, truly have the best interest of our, all of our children, you know, at the forefront. So I just wanted to, again, see if the board had any willingness to take another look at allowing exceptions to the redistricting in the elementary schools.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. As you know, we can't get into a response back and forth, but I can tell you that we did get your email. I apologize for not responding.
I realize there's a lot going on right now, so...
We've had a lot of meetings, but I think it's certainly an issue that's, most likely, will be discussed. I know it's been discussed, as we're looking at, in fact, it's on the agenda tonight to talk about how the redistricting went and so on, how the whole initiative went. So that's about all I can say at this point.
Okay, great.
I can say it's under discussion, and we greatly appreciate you being here and sharing, taking the time to share your concern.
Well, thank you for hearing my concerns. I hope that definitely I will hear more about it. As it impacts my family greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
Will be, it's on the agenda tonight, isn't it?
We have an agenda item tonight.
Concerning that.
That's discussing transportation and those kinds of issues and stuff like that.
Okay.
Just to clarify, what we're looking at tonight is the transportation pieces of it, not necessarily out-of-district transportation, Peter. That was Mr. Feely's request, and that's what we're talking about tonight, okay? Okay. Tricia Muller, please.
Good evening. Tricia Muller, 44 Webster Road. Just like Melissa, I'm here for the same reason. I have two children who attend Enfield Public Schools. They were, they attend the same daycare as Melissa's child, and they have since infancy. I just want to preface that my son has special needs. He is, he does have Asperger's, and anything out of routine is very, very difficult in his life. He's very high-functioning, academically does amazing. They both started off at Parkman, which is not in my district. I am Nathan Hale District. And before redistricting, my children went to Parkman School and went to the home daycare, which provided transportation to school and from school. A daycare that I am very, very happy and pleased with. They have been wonderful with my children. After the redistricting, we, luckily, were still in Nathan Hale District. My, my children were still able to go to the home daycare, and however, coming up, this next coming year, we, my son will be going to Eli Whitney. And unfortunately, that's going to cause a huge hardship, because my job does not allow for me to be able to bring him to and from school, nor am I comfortable with displacing him in a new daycare setting, because it's convenient to the school. It's also, even if it were convenient, there's not necessarily going to be openings in daycare centers near Eli Whitney. That being said, finding quality childcare before and after school is not an easy thing. My children deserve the best, and they've had the best. And I, too, am asking if there were going to be any considerations made for families. We have started looking into the possibility of parochial school, which really bothers me, because I hate to think that we would have to take them out of public schools. But with our jobs being what they are, and with just the way I am feeling about taking my children out of, out of the home daycare center that they are at, I want, you know, continuity and routine for my children, and with my son especially, it's a very, for him to have to go from Parkman to Nathan Hale, and then go from Nathan Hale the next year to Eli Whitney, and lose the daycare center that he's been going to because of transportation, because it's out of district, is really, really tough for me to stomach. And I just really do ask that, you know, going forward, I know it is, you know, in discussion, it's nothing, you know, it's, it's, nothing is being discussed big time tonight, but please, you know, keep the families that are going to have huge hardships, you know, in consideration. You know, again, like, I was, I was, stood above, in front of the board last year, hated the redistricting idea, because it was, it was, you know, all up in the air, but, you know, it, this year, we kind of smoothed it out. Everything started to work. But I do ask, you know, that I don't, I don't want to take my, my children out of Enfield Public Schools. I do ask that you do take into consideration, you know, letting the children who were grandfathered in before, before the redistricting took place, possibly go to a school that is not necessarily in their district, but it, where it makes it easier for the families to find transportation, because it's, it is a very big hardship for some of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Janice Weston, please.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Janice Weston. I live at 22 Oakwood Street. I'm not as good at public speaking as them, so I wrote out what I am going to say tonight. I wrote a letter to the Board of Ed a couple of months ago requesting that my oldest daughter, who is starting kindergarten this fall, be reassigned to a school outside of our district. Please understand that this has nothing to do with the schools themselves, but everything to do with the proximity of the schools to my home and the daycare provider. I live a half a mile from Henry Barnard, yet with the new school districts, my daughter is now supposed to be bussed over four miles to Nathan Hale. This makes no sense to me, and I'm sure there are many other parents, as we, we know now, there's two here that talk about this, that doesn't make sense to them either. You know, why would the district lines be drawn so close to a school? That just doesn't make sense to me. And when we were at the, preparing for the kindergarten transition meeting in January, my husband asked Dr. Gallagher, you know, how were those lines, you know, thought out, and what was the reasoning behind them? And he had answered that they just drew the lines down the main roads. I don't think that's an acceptable answer, and I don't think other families in Enfield should find that to be an acceptable answer either. And I've heard, you know, I've heard parents complaining that their kids are now on the bus from 45 minutes to an hour each way, as a result of the new districts, which is another concern that should be, like, looked into, but, you know, I don't know if my daughter has to go there and is on the bus somehow. That is a concern of mine, but I won't know until it happens, so I digress. Five years ago, though, we carefully selected our daycare provider for various and very specific reasons, one being that it is in our school district, and the bus for Henry Barnard stops there. Now that she's supposed to go to Nathan Hale, we have no means of transportation for her to and from school, as my husband and I both work full-time outside of Enfield. I know that people, you know, can argue that we can just switch daycare providers. Again, not an acceptable answer to this problem. And without getting into details, you know, switching daycare is not as easy as it sounds. And again, we carefully researched, interviewed. You know, you choose your daycare based on feeling 100% comfortable with them. You know, it's what you can afford, it's in your school district, you know, and your kids have been going there for, I have a three-year-old, and now a five-year-old, they've been going there since basically birth. I would hate to rip them out of there, especially my three-year-old does not deal with transitions like that very well, and it would not, I would not be happy with that. And again, you know, it's, this isn't an option for us to switch, and I shouldn't have to consider that, seeing as I live a half a mile from, from that school. And most importantly, you know, our lives, and most importantly, my children's lives, should not be thrown into upheaval because of some poorly thought-out school district lines. I live a half a mile away from Henry Barnard School and over four miles away from Nathan Hale. This should be a no-brainer. So please, you know, do the right thing and allow my children to attend Henry Barnard. It would just, it would take a great deal of stress off of my family, and, you know, it, it makes sense, and it would mean a lot to us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to talk to the board, speak before the board tonight? There are nobody else, then we'll close audience participation at this point and move on to board member comments. And if we could start to my left with our student?
There are a lot of fun activities going on at Enfield High now that the school year's coming to an end, and one of them was the Drama Club put on their last production of the year, which was Cinderella, and they did a really good job. I got to see the Friday night show, and it was really good. And also, next week, Enfield High will be having their senior prom, which is Friday, May 18th. That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Rancourt?
A couple of things. Last Friday was Effie's Enfield Idol, which was very successful. I was unable to go. And the grand champion was Chad Gelbach. And I hear it was a wonderful night. They did wonderful with the raffles and volunteers. This Wednesday, which is tomorrow, is School Nurse Day. So if your child goes to School Nurse a lot, she deserves a present. And mine hasn't been frequenting that nurse this year that much. Also, this week, many of the schools, you'll probably know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So one of my sons goes to Whitney, and I know that yesterday they had a lunch. The PTO did a wonderful job with it. And at Nathan Hale, they're having a wonderful event where the, the first day, Monday, yesterday, they got to bring a flower in, so that teachers would have a bouquet by the end of the day. Today, my son had to wear blue, because that was his teacher's favorite color. Tonight, on my way home, I have to go buy candy for her, because that's what the next day is, and then, I'm not on to Thursday and Friday yet. I haven't moved that far down the schedule. Regarding the moms that talked tonight, my sons went out of district when, because of daycare, because of where my mom lived when I was younger. And, and I'm a working mom, you know, and my husband works out of town. And definitely, looking at the, the numbers that were previous, you know, when we take out how there's no Alcorn anymore, there's no Stowe anymore, if you went to Enfield Street, you go to Park, looking at all that, I have to agree that I don't think it's as big a number as it used to be. And I, as a mom, would support it, because I have been totally in your boat before. And I think it is something we need to, to look at. Also, I do have to say, regarding the reorg, I've been blessed that my boys did good, but a lot of parents haven't, and I think that, as a board, we really need to hear their complaints. And I think that either a survey of the parents needs to be done, or a committee needs to be done, where it's not just all complaints, there are solutions given. But I definitely think this board needs to hear, because what the board, last board sold me, I don't feel I got. So as a parent myself, I feel as though I wasn't given everything that they sold me on. So as a parent, I would like to have some input also. And just that, the children, it's just not the hours that they're in school that we should be concerned about as a Board of Ed. It should be their whole entire day. We send them home with homework, that's done outside the school district. And their comfort level before and after school should be a concern, because it does affect their eight-hour day. Who they begin with the morning in their daycare, and who they end their day with affects how they're doing in school also, and I think we really need to consider that. The whole entire child, and not just the hours that they're sitting in a chair in our schools. Thanks.
Mrs. Hall?
Actually, Mrs. Rancourt stole some of my ideas, especially the Teacher Appreciation Week and the Nurses, School Nurses Day, which is, as she said, tomorrow. So, okay, that's all I've got to say.
Wow. Mr. Feely?
Yes, thank you. I, I'm a firm believer that, that the reorganization we've done and the redistricting we've done for the, for the community, or I should say, the previous boards that some of you were involved with, did, did a quality job, and doing everything for the right reason. I, through interaction with different parents, have heard some of the concerns, and where I, I fully agree with it, and I believe that, if I'm not out of, out of turn speaking on it, anytime you have a decision, no matter how great it may be, and how, how wonderful the, the results we're looking at may be, I think that, like anything, you, you have to consider tweaking it as a solution, rather than to explore exceptions on a, on a case-by-case basis. I, I do believe that we'd be better served to find out what the scope of the need is and to make those necessary adjustments. Tonight, we have three parents coming forward, and that's why I wanted to speak on it for an agenda. I think we have to really look at where the lines were drawn to, to make sure that, that nobody's put in an unnecessary hardship. But, so for that, I appreciate the board considering for an agenda item, and concur that we can, we can, I think we can do better with it without unraveling the whole system. So, thank you.
Donna?
Actually, May 30th will be Nathan Hale's 50th year of service in the town as being a school celebration, and that's at 6:30. And they also, during Teacher Appreciation Week on that Friday, will have a luncheon for their staff, or breakfast, I should say, for their staff. And that's about it.
Thank you. Vinnie?
Yeah.
No, we'll go this way.
You're messing me up now. Jeez. Okay. I was asked to, I was asked to read a little something for, actually, I stole it from our rep from Enfield High, but Mrs. Stone, who heads the DECA over at Enfield High. Enfield High DECA is hosting its 7th Annual Powderpuff Game on Saturday, May 12th, at 6:30 PM at the high school behind there, under the lights. Come to cheer and laugh as the junior girls take on the senior girls, with our hilarious male cheerleaders encouraging them to victory. Just for a minute, that's a scary thought, guys dressed up like cheerleaders. It's, it's, it's not a good thing. But it is all in good fun. It's the 7th Annual. My daughters have both participated. They have a ball, they raise some money, and they're asking you to come out there. And there will be food and beverages, it is a fun night, and all proceeds benefit the Enfield Food Shelf. Entry to the game is $2 for students, $4 for senior citizens, and $5 for adults. In the past, we were able to raise $1,000. Would like you to do, we would like to do just as well this year, if not better. And thank you for your continued support, Mrs. Stone, DECA advisor. So if you can get out there, it is a good time. The girls have a great time, but it is for a very good cause. So if you can get out there this Saturday night at 6:30, under the lights, it's supposed to be good weather, get out there. Thanks. That's it.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment towards the parents that came in here tonight. Number one, we appreciate you coming in. It's imperative that we know what the concerns are of the residents. One thing I would like to say, though, in our defense, is that, you know, we did not do this to mess up families or anything like that. What we did this for was so that we could more expediently and better utilize our schools. Right now, we have some of the, literally, we have the best class-size numbers that we have seen in the past eight years, if not longer. And I think that that's more important, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that that's more important for education than where your student might go to school or might go to their daycare center. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes, I'd like to thank the three speakers that came out tonight. I happen to know where Melissa and Trish, they use the same daycare provider. She's a top-notch provider, you're lucky to have her. She's wonderful. You can imagine that this is hard on her, having to lose kids and replace them after having them since they were infants. I definitely want to echo what Jen Rancourt said. The reorg, from the transportation standpoint to what's happening with the families, definitely, we need to have some feedback via a survey, parents, focus groups. This is something, you know, it, it wasn't going to be perfect in a year, but it definitely can be fine-tuned, and as a board, we have that responsibility to you all. My kids were impacted by the reorg, their school closed. I have three kids at three different schools right now. They transitioned pretty well. They were there for a year, and we're moving on again. So I hear your concerns, and if I haven't responded via email, I do apologize. But you're, you're, you're three tonight, but there's more of you out there. And, and I hear that, and I recognize that, and I really think Jen couldn't have said it better, what she said tonight. So I do appreciate you guys coming out here tonight. I just wanted to talk about Teacher Appreciation Week briefly. Hazardville Memorial is doing a great job. It's, there's a different event every week. Yesterday, we had a breakfast. Tomorrow is our school, our teacher's favorite colors. I'm not sure my second grader's going to want to wear pink tomorrow, but we'll figure something out for him. Today, Hazardville also had a Bring Your Grandparents Special Person to You lunch today. You guys did a phenomenal job, Mrs. Mizoli. You managed the traffic very well, the lunch times very well. I know Hazardville has a small parking lot, so when I was driving there, I was thinking, you know, if, I hope it doesn't rain. They, they did a great job. Hazardville's really embraced the K through 2 prerogative, and it's, it's really fun to walk around that school. Eli Whitney had, again, like Jen said, they're doing some week-long events as well. So, you know, appreciate your teachers, they do a lot for our kids, and I think it's a great way to recognize them. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Genitis?
Seems like Jen's getting all the attention tonight. I really don't think this is the place where we should be taking political shots, and I don't know if that was one that Jen threw out when she said the last board sold her something, and she wasn't buying it. I'm finding that this board is making a sale, and I'm not buying this one. As far as what Chuck had to say, I wouldn't say it's one of the best balanced class sizes that we've had in the last year, eight years. I'd say it's the best we've ever had. From the 38 years that I taught in town and the four years I've been out, the balance from K to, up to the middle school, or at least up to the fifth grade for sure, is just unbelievable. It's X number of kids come into the building, divided by the number of teachers, and you can't balance it any better than that compared to what it had turned into. As far as what the speakers had to say, I realize there's a hardship there, and I'm wondering if this board, at some point in time, can come up with some solution where maybe written requests or something like that could be given to the board, or a subcommittee, or something on the board to look into these hardships and maybe take some action to them, and/or in conjunction with tinkering with where the lines have been drawn. And maybe if we sit down and look at some of these hardships, we can just correct them by redrawing some of the lines, as long as it doesn't affect the balance of the class sizes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Our Fermi rep?
I guess I'm going to echo a little bit what Patience said, that it's, you know, the end of the year, and we have a lot of good stuff happening, and it's exciting. So I just have a few key dates, that's all. Friday is our prom, so it's a pretty exciting week at Fermi. The Honors Breakfast is May 30th and 31st, from 7:30 to 9:00 in the CAF. It's split into two days, so we can fit everybody by last name. And the Awards Night is 6:30 to 9:00 in the auditorium. I didn't write the date, though. I think we have a meeting close to there, so I'll double-check, and I'll get back to you next meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
The Honors Breakfast, just the 30th or 30th?
30th.
Yeah, there are two days, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. And just to wrap up, somebody, several somebodies here pointed out that this is, Nurses Day is tomorrow. And I think all of us appreciate what they do, but I don't know whether you know what they're doing tomorrow. They're doing what they always do. They're helping somebody out else out there. They're working as a group at the soup kitchen, and they're preparing all the desserts and bringing all kinds of food there and serving the guests there. And I think, you know, they are special people, and I think they deserve commendation and praise and a huge thank you. I think, and what a lot of people don't know is the nurses, and we had them here to celebrate what they've done, is that during our snow event back in, around Halloween, they served in our centers, you know, at JFK and at Enfield High School and did a great job. And, you know, they were just unselfish, and that's what they do all the time. So, I would just commend them for that and just recognize them. Secondly, in terms of our speakers, and we've had a number of folks who have written us, and I apologize for not getting back to, I have gotten back to several others, most recently today. And we are concerned. We want you to come here and tell us those kinds of things. And I'm going to go back to something Mr. Feely brought up a couple of meetings ago, I think, when he asked for us to put on the agenda the issue of the transportation. But we were talking about a bigger issue than that, and I think that was the initiative itself. I think a lot of good things came out of that initiative, and I think they had a number of goals and I think they achieved a lot of them. But like any good initiative, I think what we need to do is evaluate. How well did it go? Is there a way to tweak it? And there may be, and if there is, then we should. If there isn't, then we've got to be honest with the folks who are out there who are affected by this. I think there were some great ideas that went into the initiative, and I think, you know, Peter and others are correct that the class, and Chuck are correct, the class sizes are very, very good. The balance of class sizes is very, very good. But I think if we're looking, if we're going to discuss at least briefly and maybe more extensively in another meeting, the transportation piece, of which we've heard about the long bus rides and stuff like that and the lines, I'm going to go to Jen's comments that we need to look, we need to evaluate. How did we do? Okay? We assumed that certain things were going to happen, and maybe we could talk to Dr. Gallagher about getting a report from the principals, from the feedback they're getting as to how well it went, based on the goals that they had within there, and we could have that discussion here, a further discussion. And so, I'll go with the will of the board on that. But I see tonight with Kevin is just starting it, beginning a discussion, and then possibly continuing it down the road and addressing it. I don't know, having looked at it myself and looked at the concerns that people have, I can tell you there's no simple solution. If it was simple, we would have done it. Okay? But I think maybe we can, I think we need to discuss it and talk about what we can do and what we can't do and costs that are involved, because costs are part of it. But I think we can tell you that we'll have an honest discussion, at the very least. At this point, I turn it over to Dr. Gallagher for the superintendent's report.
I'll try to go through this as fast as I can, because I know it's been a long night with the earlier meeting. Have a lot of dates in front of me here. There's a Kite Community Plan unveiling tomorrow night that the board's invited to. It's at 5:30 PM in the Village Center in Thompsonville. It's being hosted by Kite, and the purpose, as I said, is to share the Enfield Early Childhood Community Plan. There's a flyer in your packet, and after that event, there is another special board meeting next night, or next, tomorrow night, so hopefully we start at 7:30. The board is invited on Thursday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM, to the Kennedy Middle School. They'll have their National Junior Honor Society induction. Intermediate schools open house. The three intermediate schools, that would be Crandall, Parkman, and Whitney, will hold open house for the incoming 3rd graders and their parents and guardians on May 15th at 6:00 PM at their respective buildings. And I received an email from Amy Morales through the Family Resource Center, and they said that Family Resource Center is working with Dial-A-Ride, and if there's people that need transportation to the open houses from the Thompsonville area, they will have Alcorn School as a pickup spot. They'll take you to your child's building, and then they'll drop you back off at Alcorn School when it's over. There's also a community conversation on creating a positive school climate, which is scheduled for May 16th at Kennedy Middle School, starting at 5:00 PM. Pre-registration is required, and they were hoping for a good turnout of board members at that. I think they'd like to involve you in some of the cluster groups that'll break out of that. In your packet is an Enfield Youth Services 2011 survey, and Mr. Torrey can speak to this in a little bit more detail. Basically, that's the preliminary results of a survey that was taken for the 6th through 12th grade students in the Enfield schools on topics related to alcohol, tobacco products, and drugs. And the survey is required to make application for selected grants. So, Tony, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, or?
Sure.
No, go ahead and do that, and I'll finish, I'll finish my report when you're, when you're through with that.
Thank you. The, just one thing on the community conversation. It's important to, John mentioned, it's important to get the board members out there, and we're getting a lot of that. We're getting a lot of staff people out there. But I want to appeal to the parents, make sure that the parents come out, because we want to hear from you. Because if, whether you're happy with what's out there in terms of a school climate or whether you have some suggestions, we need to hear from you, and you need to hopefully mix it up with some of us who will be there at a table and talk about that and so on. So, we want to definitely get your points of view on that. The Enfield, the survey results that John asked me to speak to, next, you have the results of those surveys in your packet tonight. They're quite extensive, as you can see. This is the third time we've done this over the last six years. As John has indicated, we, the results of this are used for, are applying for grants up into the $150,000 to $200,000 range. Enfield has a task force that works on substance abuse and alcohol abuse, and a lot of their suggestions is gleaned from some of the analysis of the results that come back from, some of the measures that they take to deal with that in the town of Enfield. Now, I also want to say that, realizing that you do have quite an extensive survey report here, Gene Hoy, who is the Director of Youth Services, and Christine Turner, who is one of the counselors or clinicians, will be with us as guests at the Enfield Board of Education meeting of May 22nd, next, two weeks from tonight. And they will present a PowerPoint highlights of some of the survey, some of the survey questions, including items from the substance abuse and school climate environment. They won't cover all the questions, because you can see just how many questions there are there, but they will cover some of the highlights. Some of the questions that they're going to be talking about would be essentially from grades 6 through 12. Meanwhile, I want to remind the board, because you authorize us to do this as well, and you're well aware of this, that in terms of school climate, the elementary principals, we did work with grades 1 through 5, and we surveyed the students there. Principals and administrative staff there, the teachers did a wonderful job doing that, and the principals have those results as well. Presently, working with a small group, John, myself, and Amy Whitbro, and a representation from the Gousting Grant are working with us to develop a parent survey. Some of the principals are in the audience this evening, will be with us Thursday. I don't know whether we'll be able to pull all that together and pull off the whole parent survey. The problem there is not so much, we'll have, we're working on the questions and so on, but it's, it's not like putting a survey together like you do for students. Students are a captive audience. So, you say, okay, we're going to do it on this day, and everything goes out and everything is handed in. With parents, it's more difficult to reach them, because if we're going to use Scantron electronics to assess the results, we can't fold them, we can't mutilate them in any way. So, they're, it's a little bit more involved with that. So, we're working on that, and the results of these surveys will provide baseline data for future assessments, not only currently, but for the next school year and beyond that. Maybe a little bit more than I should have said, but thank you.
Okay. Next item is you all have your iPads, and we just thought we'd take a moment since you're all here together if there's any major issues that Kathy needs to know about. I know some of you had no problem whatsoever opening it up and seeing the agenda on Friday, and other people were calling saying, how come my packet isn't at my door? So, again, if you want the hard copy, we're still bringing them to you, and if you want them delivered, I can still get them delivered to you probably on Friday. So, we'll, just let us know what your pleasure is, and we'll get them out. But also, if you needed any additional training, some of you are very proficient with it, and other ones I know that you're novices and you're working your way through it. So, if you, if you need any training, if you'd let us know what you would like to have the training on, we can arrange to set that up, and some evening, when it's not so late, we'll have you come in and work, work with the trainer to help you resolve any issues. So, I don't know if there's anything that someone needs to say or?
I would just, Mr. Brass is here right now, and I know there's something that he's, they're going to send out about changing our email tomorrow.
Password. He wants to do something with your password.
And, you know, since he'd be one of the ones that would be doing the training, maybe we could, when you come up to speak, you could kind of survey us on what dates would work or something like that. Okay?
Don't change anything.
Peter, you love it.
You're saying I shouldn't try and get a password since they're going to change?
They're going to change tomorrow. He'll speak to that, if that's okay, Dr. Gallagher.
Okay. The grants update is in your packet for your information. There's a personnel report in your packet for information. And if I could piggyback a little bit onto what Tony was talking about there with the survey, we're spending a little bit of your money. I do have a professional survey person coming in. In fact, it's the company that did the community plan. And we've invited some PTO presidents. We've invited some principals. We wanted to have some parent representation. That's why we have the PTO people there. And what I'm asking them to do is put together, we were talking about doing a survey to see how the reorganization went. We intentionally wanted to wait a little bit to do that. So, we're hoping to put something together that would go out in early June, would come back in early June, and we're figuring that way, we've gone through most of the school year. And we can incorporate these kind of questions. So, again, if there's any board members that specifically want to be involved with that, Ms. Randkort, or Mrs. LeBlanc, or whoever you'd like to put on, let us know. And if you're available, you're welcome to come to the work session. It's going to be Thursday morning. You'd have to be over here Thursday morning, but is it 12:30? Is it 12:30? So, at 12:30, it'd be at the board offices.
What date, John?
Two days from today. It would be the 10th, May 10th. So, and we can send out a reminder, and if anyone wanted to come, they're welcome to drop by. So, okay. Basically, that concludes the superintendent's report, Mr. No.
Okay. Do you have any board committee reports?
Board committee reports? Yes, go ahead.
We're going to take a look at things, and I just want to find out what they think is the best thing, because I think a lot of people, honestly, are not online. There's people we know that aren't online, and that's one of the concerns we have. So, we'll be reaching out to people, but as Tony said, we're taking a look at a lot of different things. The Scantron seems to be the preferred method, because I guess it's very quick. But it may very well turn out to be an online survey. I'm not too sure, a combination thereof. We're hoping to get a good result coming back. We want to get a good percentage coming back. That's the main thing.
I just wondered whether we could use something like Survey Monkey or something like that.
We've thrown all that out. So, unless we want to relive the meeting on Thursday early, I'd suggest, if you're interested, come Thursday.
Relax. We'll talk, because I think you could catch both sides.
Okay. Because I know you've still got a full agenda here in front of you that's going on tonight.
Board committee reports? Any? Okay. You have the, okay, go ahead.
The high school referendum, pre-referendum committee met last Thursday, and they got actual phases from the architect as to when they thought the completion of the project and the phases would progress. And right now, there's a target of having it complete by 2017, 2018, should the referendum pass.
What was it again?
That's like 2017, 2018.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
They're meeting again on Thursday night at 7:00.
I'll wait till you're done. I'd just like to comment, Tina, that she seemed extremely knowledgeable, and you've been very professional about the way you've been doing this whole thing with the high school. Am I saying that because you're sitting next to me?
We'll ditto that, okay?
Did they have any suggestions, Tina, as to how they could speed up the, should the referendum pass?
No, they did not.
Okay.
I, that question, I, you know, I was concerned about the graduation requirements coming up, you know, for the 2016, 2017 year. And as long as we have the classes, it was discussed amongst the committee. As long as we had, we were able to offer the classes, we should be able to do it. But I think it's something we need to look into further as a board or as a committee. One of the things that I kind of think I failed to say, though, every week after I sit with this committee, they are such a dedicated group of people that are either have been assigned or have residents that have volunteered to sign up for it, and they are so dedicated. And, you know, they really keep working week after week, and it's really been a great committee to work with. So, I've been happy to do that.
Very good. Thank you for what you do. I appreciate it. The approval of council payroll?
Yep. The Finance Committee met on April 25th, 2012, to review financial statements from March year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion, I move we accept this superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of March, total expenditures amount to $5,874,963.86, broken down between payroll totaling $3,949,156.86 and other accounts totaling $1,925,807. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Is there a second? By Joyce? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Is that the only one?
That's the only one.
Adam transfers? Okay. John, there are no, there's no unfinished business? Correct. And we have new business, 15A, the approval of the Enfield High School Expansion Renovation Project Educational Specifications Resolution. We have Mr. Pongrance here?
Dr. Pongrance, Dr. Art Pongrance is here. If you'd like to come up to the front. And basically, what the board's being asked to do tonight, Dr. Pongrance has been hired by the town to guide the initial work. You all know that. And one of the required tasks is for the Board of Education to approve the educational specification and authorize the administration to submit the EDO 49 paperwork, which is required for state funding. And there is a related resolution that's on the back of the one that the board has, that the council was presented with, I believe, last night. I think you sent out an email that passed unanimously. Was that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Went through unanimously. And what we're asking you to do tonight is to pass the resolution that's proposed for the board, which is on the front of that. Educational Board, Enfield Board of Education Resolution for Educational Specifications. And he's available to answer any questions, and I know this is a little?
Typically, what you do is read the resolution first.
Okay.
And then discussion afterwards.
Sounds like a plan. Do we, I don't have a copy here, John. Tina, do you have it?
Got one here.
I have it here.
There's still something about those hard copies.
We're still in transition. We're still in transition.
But you are their fearless leader.
I've got it right here. It's fine. Okay. Whereas, "The Enfield Board of Education has determined that there is a need to increase program space in the existing Enfield High School to accommodate an increased student population and enhance curriculum. And whereas it is the expressed desire of the Enfield Board of Education to continue operation of the Enfield High School for substantially the same nature and purpose, now therefore it be resolved that the Enfield Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution with the intention of establishing and approving educational specifications as required for the proper submission to the state as part of the school construction grant process for the Enfield High Expansion Renovation Project. And further be it resolved that the superintendent of Enfield Public Schools be authorized to submit Form EDO 49, Grant Application and Executive Summary of the Educational Specifications for a School Building Project on behalf of the Board of Education."
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Donna. Now, the discussion? That was, that was the whole resolution, I believe, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure all of you, either from the presentation that the architect made to the Board of Edentown Council, or from watching the community conversation, are pretty much familiar with what we're trying to do, that, again, trying to put Fermi and Enfield High School together in one building and provide them with the space to deliver the curriculum that's recommended by the state for 2016, which I think will put us way ahead of the game on that. Well, one of the things that Tina had mentioned, the phasing schedule is on the agenda for this Thursday night for the committee. And I'm not 100% sure whether we'll have the schematic architect that we currently employ do a lot with that. But again, when we get the, after the referendum passes, when we appoint the project building committee, I think that part of the project building committee's charge committee, I think that part of the project building committee's charge will be to come up with something that speeds up the process.
Very good. So essentially, this is just solidifying all the work that you folks have done and that we've been involved with since the day we started this initiative.
Yeah, yeah. And as Tina mentioned, I mean, the committee has done a fabulous job. I mean, considering that they started in March, you know, that they've really put this project together really fast and really well.
I agree with you on that. And the presentation they gave, I think it was the 26th, is that what it was?
I believe so, yeah.
That was exceptional. And I, we appreciate what you're doing as well. At this point, does anybody have any questions about the resolution? Roll call?
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, as usual, Art. Appreciate it. 15B, approve the fiscal year 2013 Head Start Federal COLA Grant. We have guests? Hi.
Hello. I'm Debbie Clement, Director of Enfield Head Start, and this is Melissa Levaser, the Education Disability Coordinator. I thought I would start with just a brief update of how we're doing. We currently have concluded our self-assessment for the year. And during that process, we look at all elements of the program, program design and management, family partnership, the curriculum. And we have parents that are involved in that process, also community representatives, Joyce as our board liaison. And the progress has been very great, and the comments from the parents have been fantastic, very positive. Our parent involvement this year has been fantastic. We've had 280 family members participate in family activities. Now, we have 104 children with 101 families, so I'm quite impressed with that. And they've been very positive and enthusiastic, and we've really enjoyed working with them. So, I want to just give them a recognition, and thank you for that. And we've also managed to have progress with the children. That's always a good thing. So, I'm going to have Melissa give a report on our assessments.
Three times a year, we do an assessment on the children. We do it in the fall. We do it in the, about February, and then we do it again in May. So, we, we go through all the areas of development. We look at the literacy skills of the preschoolers, math skills, social-emotional, cognitive, fine motor, language, and gross motor skills. All of the areas have seen tremendous growth. Our literacy growth has been the highest, at 44% increase from the fall to the spring. Mathematics at 39%, social-emotional at 33%, cognitive at 31%, fine motor 27%, language 29%, and gross motor 29%. So, we've seen tremendous growth in all of the children. We also, we, we also use the same literacy curriculum that the kindergarten uses in the public school system as a scale down to the preschoolers. So, we're using lively letters for preschoolers, which is really helping our preschoolers to start to read. So, we have, we do have quite a few preschoolers who are going into kindergarten, who may already be reading the short words and knowing the sounds of the letters. So, we felt that it was a really successful year this year. This is the greatest growth we've seen since we've used this program to track the data. So, it's been fantastic.
Very good. You're looking for us just to approve the COLA portion of this grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Peter?
I do. You have 104 kids in the program now?
Right.
Is there a waiting list? And how large is it?
We have 50 on the waiting list.
50?
Mm-hmm.
And is it a matter of space?
No, it's a matter of funding. We're only funding for 104 slots. Well, space too. We're, we have six classrooms. They're all filled. But mainly, it's just that there's no additional funding from the federal government at this point.
This is just out of curiosity. It's not meant as anything other than curiosity. About three weeks ago, a report came out nationally that was saying kids who attended Head Start couldn't be identified a year later in first grade which ones attended Head Start and which ones didn't. Can you comment on that at all, or?
I don't remember seeing that report. They couldn't be identified?
Yeah, they couldn't tell which ones had Head Start. Anybody else see that?
Oh, you mean as far as their outcomes?
Yeah.
I'd heard the one that it could fade out by third grade. But that particular one, I haven't. As far as the results of how children do, that's sort of like statistics. There's reports that show that they do make progress, and there's some that show that they don't. But in all of the reports, the attitude towards learning has been excellent as they go through school. That has not faded. And there's also various viewpoints as that you can send the children prepared to school, but you have to also make sure that the curriculum is lined up between the pre-K and the K in the first and second grade, so that they continue to learn. It's not like a one-shot vaccine. You give it to them, and now they're going to be wonderful for the rest of their lives. All we can do is prepare them.
I realize that.
And encourage them. But that particular report, no.
I'm just curious because it seems weird.
But there's been later reports too, that have showed that children who go through Head Start or any quality preschool program are more prepared to learn. They can, they're, they're more likely to continue their education and to continue to try, not give up as easily, and to graduate from high school and then go on and be involved in their community. So, that particular report, I'm not aware of.
John?
I enjoyed hearing that you had a lot of parent involvement and being active with the PTO presidents. The K to two schools are having a very hard time finding involved parents. So, I'd like to see if maybe I could have the PTO presidents contact you so that they could get information out for any kindergarteners coming up, because they do need a lot of leaders, and that's a hard spot. And if they've already been leaders at your Head Start program, it would be great transition for kindergarten.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
Thank you. Just real, one real quick question. You went and mentioned that you have 104 students, and you're not at your capacity. What is your capacity at this?
We are at our capacity.
Oh, so.
We have 104 slots, and all 104 slots are filled, and we have 50 on the waiting list.
Okay, I thought you said that you could, you could handle more kids.
I said that even though we have them on the waiting list, there's no federal funding to add slots.
Right. Maybe I'm not making myself clear.
Oh, as far as space?
Yes.
In this particular, in our Head Start building, there is not space.
Okay. So, your capacity is at 104, and you are at that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much. We'll, do I hear a motion to?
To accept the COLA? The COLA grant, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joyce. Everybody, is there any discussion on that? All in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15C, the Approval of the Adult Education Program Improvement Grant. I think we have some folks here.
This is Kathy Chaplan that's coming up. She's the Director of the Enfield Adult Ed.
Thank you. What you have in front of you is a summary of the grants that we are applying for. This is a second round of competitive grants. We received many of these grants about four years ago and had continuation and substantive growth. So, we are entering this new round for competitive grants in these areas. And they are designed, as you can see, to be program improvement grants, meaning that it allows us to take the core Band-Aids and address town and community needs. And the town has been very supportive, as have our colleagues in the different school systems, the different community agencies.
Kathy, I just have a, just one or two questions. First of all, we appreciate what you do. You run a wonderful program. The grant that you're, you're asking us to approve, is it an application for a grant or is it an approval of a grant that's being awarded to you? It's a submission, it's an application, okay? What kind of chances would you have? And do you think your chances are good to get this?
I think they are good. I think it's more competitive this year than it was the last time. But I do think, based on the work that we've done over the past four years, and the depth and breadth that we've been able to move to, I think that we're in a good position to apply for these.
Are your grants drying up like all the other grants? The opportunities are kind of going away, or no?
In some areas. I think initially, this round of grants that is similar to this that we'd applied for four years ago, those were gradually reduced by about 30,000, 40,000. So, to continue the work, we're expanding and building in some good infrastructure so that this will be, this will position us well, so that if at some point we need to look at other resources, we will have all of the tangential things there to be able to look at other grant funding opportunities.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question, but it's not about. Yeah. Kathy, last year, we discussed what the legislature was doing with respect to remedial education for those going to college.
We're not meeting afterwards, are we?
And you very much approved of it. Have you heard anything about it since, inasmuch as this year's legislature is trying to turn the first year of college and the first year of, let's say, math or English into a combined credit course and remedial course? And I thought the original program using the adult education made so much sense.
There are, right now, three pilot, adult ed pilot sites that they are using to get data to see whether or not adult ed can be a strong player in this with exactly the kinds of things that we have talked about. And those pilot sites, for the most part, other than Manchester, are in the southern part of the state, and they're sites that have very large populations moving to, to community colleges and real concerns about the remedial aspect of it. And I'm fairly confident in the data that we'll get from all three of those sites. I know the directors, and I know the programs. And they're all slightly different. So, I think I can come back to you with a little more information about it. What we do here in town is to do a, a transition program that is a very active one, where we identify students that we know are moving to community college. We give them an accurate place or diagnostic. We do intensive skill work with them with a goal that they will be able to go into matriculated courses. And SNUTAC has been a very good partner with us. They allow some, us to really work innovatively with them and look at some things that other community colleges have not done yet, but they're looking at some of the models. And one of them is to look for different tastes of college, like an introduction to software pro, of course, that students can pay their credit. And that's what, that is part of one of the grants here. That allows them to get a taste of college, so some juice, in a sense, at the same time that they're getting remedial work. So, that we're really trying to look at what the case is with the student to make sure that we're responding to them more holistically and looking at their remedial needs, but also looking at what might be part of a career pathway, so that we can manage all elements of that in moving students forward. But the transition issue is, and will continue to be, really, I think, at the center of a lot of what we will continue to do, because remedial skills are.
Being focused on everywhere.
Everywhere. And, and it is, the students need multiple layers to strengthen that transition aspect.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I didn't.
I don't have a question. I just want to make a comment. The program that you guys run over, the Adult Ed, has really had a personal impact in my family. My son, who is struggling, has a renewed vigor for learning and a college path, so thank you.
It's always nice to hear that. That's great. I didn't attend a motion to approve the submission of the grant?
Motion.
Second. By, any discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for everything.
Good. Thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you. Going down to 15D, the Approval of the Three-Year Educational Technology Plan. I see Mr. Barassa is here, and Amanda Fury, come on down.
Approval of the password changes?
No more angry birds.
You're asking us to, you sent us the plan, and we've read every word, okay? And just about memorized it.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
It almost ran out of memory on my iPad here. But bring us up to date and a brief summary, because we do have a long meeting, but also let us know what your request is of us.
Well, every three years, the State of Connecticut requires us to submit a, the ED 616 Plan, which is a three-year technology plan that every district has to, has to submit to the state. And the process is where the, the plan is developed by a committee, and we've had parents involved, teachers involved, principals involved, Dr. Gallagher was involved, and Paul Russell, the head of the IT department, was involved. And after the plan was finished and completed, the state provides a template for that. Then some of the process could be to give you the plan, and then we would submit it to CREG for approval. What we've done is we've submitted the, the plan for approval to CREG first, to say that we do all of our due diligence and cover all the areas that we're supposed to. And, and then they sent us a report back saying we did everything except for getting your approval, Dr. Gallagher's signature, and Mr. Russell's signature, which is exactly what I had planned or thought would happen. The next step is after you approve the plan, if you have any questions on it tonight, we will certainly address it. Amanda was very instrumental in, in putting this plan together with me and the committee. And the next step would be your approval, Dr. Gallagher's signature, Mr. Russell's signature, and then we submit it to, to the state for final acceptance.
Any questions?
It is a rather extensive plan, as you saw, all the number of pages that you had to flip through with your iPad. And Kevin, everybody wants to know why you have the white cover there, and everybody else has black here.
I know the answer to this, but I think it's good to hear it here. We've been having a lot of discussion about the iPads and about, you know, looking at the direction. We authorized a pilot earlier in our, in this session here. And, and I know that you were coming to closure on that and getting the results of that. Do all of the things that we've been talking about fit in with this plan? Does this, does this plan allow for the things that we're talking about? Does it endorse those things?
Actually, the, the great part about having a three-year technology plan, we used to have a five-year technology plan, which was absolutely insane, because when you look at the scope of how technology changes over a five-year period, I mean, it's changing every six months. And so, trying to predicting five years in advance would have been very, very difficult. So, the timing of the iPad and the arrival of the iPad and tablet technology and all of these new ideas, Citrix and, and the use of various things, and many of them cost-effective things, couldn't have come at a better time for us. It is integrated into our plan and fully, you know, we hope that in the future that we'll get to a one-to-one kind of a scenario here. So, we've outlined some of the beginning steps of it, and we know that this will take time to implement. So, it's, the timing of this is absolutely perfect for what we plan to do with this and the pilot program that we run. I believe I'm going to give you an update on that next, next week?
Next Tuesday.
Okay, next Tuesday. And, and the results of that were very, very promising, and so, so we're very encouraged.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barassa or Amanda Fury about the plan itself before we go on to a motion? Yes?
What is the significant change in this plan from your previous plan?
I would think in many cases, it is the use of the tablet technology, expanding our infrastructure. We pointed out that the reconfiguration and its effect that it's had on our technology program. In particular, we've noted that there is a significant part of our schools, the K-2 schools, that in the future, what we would like to have is another technology instructor to be able to assist the K-2 schools. And we have that in the plan, and it's not saying that it's going to be funded or whatever, because we're certainly aware of that. But, but it is part of our technology plan to expand our curriculum to go down to K-2. Right now, our curriculum is, is three through five, three through eight, excuse me. And so with expansion of our curriculum and the additional personnel.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Peter?
Thank you for asking.
Is this a conversion over to Apple?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
But I will also be very, very straightforward in saying that I believe it's our responsibility to give kids as much exposure that we can have to a lot of technologies, anything that they're going to encounter in the workforce. And you are a prime example here of, of where you didn't have iPads and using the kind of technologies that we're using now, just a year ago.
So these are the iPads that, this has to do with what's going on right now, the, the pilot program with the high schools?
It's actually, at all levels, that we pick people.
It's K-12.
Because I had some high school people telling me that they're having trouble with this, hooking up to their, no, I'm ignorant on these terms, what, the servers or something?
Yeah, we actually.
That they could do more on their laptops?
Actually, that was part of the pilot. And, and the good news is, is that based on the discussions we just had, I'm going to say Monday, we came up with a solution that, that deals with 99% of the issues that they had. It's connectivity issue and printing, it's also being able to access to C drive. Okay, I don't want to use too many terms here, Peter, I don't want to confuse you here, but.
I don't see, but I do drive.
They, they will be able to do that. And they had some issues with TAC and hack and so on, but those issues have been resolved.
And those we wouldn't have discovered had we not gone through the pilot program.
That's right. The pilot spurred, spurred the outcome for that, which is a positive outcome. So we'll be hearing more about that next week and the options that we have and where we can go with it. You'll be intrigued, I know you will.
When will that meeting be?
Tuesday. You feeling ill or what? Okay, is, any, any other questions on this, or can we move the question here?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a move by Donna and seconded by Vinnie. Is there any other discussion on it? Then a show of hands? In favor? Any against?
Anybody?
Any abstain?
I don't know, I don't know nothing about it.
You know more, Peter, you didn't like it the first time around, you really became an enthusiast, so.
Right.
I'm looking for that to happen again. Wishful thinking. Okay, thank you, folks, very much. Can we just take a moment and just ask a question about the password issue?
Certainly. If I could just do one, one last thing about the tech plan, as far as the next procedure goes, our next deadline is, is June 15th, but as soon as we have the signatures and everything, we will get this to, to Project Learn, so that's for final state certification. And now to talk about.
Question about the passwords, because I told the, the folks, based on the email I got, that there's a change coming.
In, in order to, to stop the proliferation of apps along all of your iPads by using that universal password here, we are going to change the, the board password for our account. And any applications that you desire that we need to be purchased, we will purchase them for you and give you the application code. But you're all going to need to set up your own Apple ID using your enfieldschools.org email. So it's important that you, number one, are using your apple dot, apples, your enfieldschools.org email, so that we can set up your ID and your special security code. Donna, I thought you, thought you would appreciate that.
I have to share this with the rest of the board.
No, you don't have to.
I, I've always been the person who likes to be the fly in the ointment, and I was inadvertently setting up. Kevin, for one, is shocked, but yes, I pointed out so dramatically that we did need our own passwords and IDs, just by trying to put Dropbox on my laptop.
I thought that the, correct me if I'm wrong, that they were going to change it so that it no longer follows to our, our home email. What I, I heard Cindy say was they were going to just restrict it to the, the Enfield.
Using the enfieldschools.org email, yes.
Okay, I think there probably needs to be some training or assistance in getting that done. And would it be all right if I had people contact you?
Absolutely. And, and it's a perfect time of the year, because I'm wrapping up some other projects that I'm working on, so I look forward to working with you again.
Kevin?
I have no such problem, since I never received my password for enfieldschool.org email.
We have to take care of that.
And we can buy apps?
You'd have to give them back at the end of your term.
You set up your own account, Peter, you can buy apps with your charge card.
Well, and that's the key, that you'll be able to buy any apps that you want, but if any that you need for the board, we will provide for you.
Right.
And what's the food ninja?
Food ninja's really good, too. Tina?
If I have my own Apple ID, because we have an iPod at, at home, would I, but I still need to set up my own for my Enfield schools?
You're going to have to do that, simply because if there's an application that the board wants to use collectively, and let's say it's just another type of iAnnotate application, then we want to just make sure that when your term is done with the board, that the Enfield Public Schools still has possession of those licenses.
Right.
So it's a way for us to manage those licenses.
That's fine.
And you can certainly use your own Apple ID that you use for your iPod and, on your iPad, too. Just keep switching between the two of them.
Okay. And just, you know, if you, if you decide to sit down with us, I love this iAnnotate, I've been taking notes on the documents all night, I've been highlighting and all that other stuff, so I'd like a little bit more information on iAnnotate. And, why are you laughing? They're jealous, they're all watching me.
It is impressive to watch you up here, I want you to know.
Now they made me forget, oh. And if I go out and I buy an app, or not buy an app, but if I get an app, a free app, and I use my Apple ID, because we're having issues with the calendar, everybody's information is popping up on the calendar.
You can shut that off.
There's baseball games, doctor's appointments, so I think we need to make sure.
Yes. And we'll work on shutting that off. And again, you all need to be on the enfieldschools.org ID, so that that works well with our, our exchange server.
Okay.
Possibly we could share with you some times that were available, and maybe we could get them to Guy, and maybe he can get back to us and find some convenient times to do some additional training.
It might be prudent just to forward you exactly what we're looking for, that way we can be grouped together, because Jen and I might not need a beginner class, we might need more of the.
Whoopie doo.
Excuse us.
That wasn't a stab, was it?
Did you just snub us?
I think we've all been snubbed doing different things.
Okay.
So you're going to draw us, pick, when's all this start?
That's my specialty.
When's all this start, where we got to do a new password?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Pictures are in the mail, I hope.
Email.
Oh, man, I'll see you tomorrow, probably.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Any else? Thank you very much, I appreciate your support.
We're going to fifteen E? And this is the discussion on the K-5 bus routes and attendance zones that Mr. Feely had asked, and maybe you could start that discussion, Mr. Feely?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there's a couple, there's a couple of, obviously, lines that, that are in question. I don't need to rehash it in the, in the interest of time. I, I propose that we actually have a, a complete discussion about how the lines were not only drawn, but how we could do it more efficiently. Dr. Gallagher was kind enough to bring a copy of, of the map, we have it on our, on our iPads. But essentially, and I'll, I'll give you what my proposal is, but I'll also give you what my ideas are with it. The first is, is my ideas with it. We have people that are going through hardships that have been exposed to me, as well as other board members, that I don't feel are, I don't feel they're necessary hardships. There's enough people, we'll, we will make disgruntled with our decisions, where we can't do anything about it. One of which, I'm looking at the maps where the, where the lines for transportation were drawn, and we have a school that's within a walking zone, that child is being bused four and a half miles away from. So my thought is, is truly in the exploration of drawing these with sensitivity to class sizes, as Mr. Genitis exposed earlier, is that there should be a certain radius around every school. In that radius, whatever the walking distance is, we'll just say for one mile, for ease of discussion here to open the discussion. But within a mile, you put the circle, it's like a compass, you put that school in the middle of that mile, and everybody in that mile goes to that school, that's their jurisdiction. If you have certain amount of overlap or extended pasture, that's where you start tweaking for the class sizes and bus where necessary. And I may be oversimplifying it for that level, but I think for the level of this discussion tonight, that that's adequate. What I do, however, see is a need to address it, especially people near the Barnard School are impacted greatly, where in, in looking and doing my, my due diligence on this, literally have a, a street around the corner from Barnard that we're busing their children to Nathan Hale. I, I think that that should be addressed and as quick as we can possibly do it, since people are enrolling in schools and making their daycare arrangements, et cetera, as was illuminated here. So that's my, my, my proposal on that, if you will, my idea. I think that a way to do it in a, in a non-inflammatory sense might be an effective way to do it, might be to say, and I would be willing to be a part of it, somebody from the other side, whether Jen or Tina know they're sensitive to it, with, with children in the schools, that perhaps maybe we have a bipartisan panel with the presidents of the PTOs, so they could do some of the information gathering from the parents, that they can funnel that, filter the information, so we just don't get inundated and get totally bogged down, because obviously we have a lot of things to go through. So that is a possibility as a way to step into that, that discussion, to where we can streamline it and be effective with it. But the end result is, I, I think that we need to redraw some of those transportation lines.
I would just kind of respectfully suggest that we, you know, there's no one simple solution to this. I understand where you're coming from, and having looked at it and scheduled and done all this stuff, it's not easy. And being a visual person, I have to look at maps and see what we do. But I also know that the, the previous board, and they can speak for themselves, they had some goals in mind when they put this thing together, and they, they covered some of the same grounds. I wonder if it may be worth, as part of that discussion, talking to Greg and talking to, who else was involved?
I would value the people that are here.
The people in the board as well, just, but they were, you know, I think spearheading this. And so we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I think all of us have heard from some folks, you know, some of the same folks, some different folks, and a lot of it is going okay. There may be pockets, and so I'm not interested in reinventing the wheel and opening up this whole thing.
I, either am I.
I know you're not. And I think what we need to do is kind of maybe put together a subcommittee that's going to look at these things and identify it and see what's possible, and if possible, then tweak it and deal with what the ramifications are. And I, but I think doing it here as a group of nine, or doing, having a subcommittee look at it closely and bring back some, some of their findings and recommendations would, might be a better use of time.
Well, and I think, I think you're actually mirroring what I was saying as the second point. Because my motion would be to have the board entertain creation of that subcommittee, and I would definitely like to be a part of that subcommittee, obviously. But also, I would like to get the feedback from what I'm suggesting, the PTOs, the PTO presidents be involved in that conversation, so that, one, it does carry the message to the public that we are listening. And, two, they may have a better handle on what's happening in their specific areas. So that is my motion, is that the formation of a subcommittee be drawn to address the necessary tweaks, the necessary adjustments.
So just suggest investigate and, and, and bring recommendations?
That, that, well said.
Okay?
Well said.
Because we don't know what the answer is going to be.
Fully understand.
Did you just make the motion?
I did make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Donna. Is there a discussion?
Is there a second?
There is a second. Donna's second, he made the motion, Donna's seconded.
I'd like to make a statement here. I think it's a, you know, when we first went and did this about two years ago, when we first started this process, we said that we would implement it and we would continue to look at it. And I think that we've gone through virtually one year of it right now, and I think it'd be a good time to sit back and look at what we have done, where the good parts are, where the bad parts are, and what we can do to at least try to correct the bad parts.
I think that's what we were talking about early when the parents were, when we were talking about.
Right. And I, I agree with it, I think that it's a, you know, we said we would do it, we would take another look at it. And I think that this would be a perfect opportunity to do it, and the timing seems to be just about right, because we might be able to get something done in order to start with it, again, in the beginning of the next school year.
And keeping in mind that Dr. Gallagher has a meeting scheduled for next, for this Thursday, correct? To, to look at what data they would get from parents, which is what you were asking about, and I assume that's good and, and, and bad, the things that are not working, things that are working, because I think a lot of things are working. And Jen?
And that's why I want to be very, very sensitive to, is there is so much great things that have come out of it. And I don't want to, I don't want to imply by any stretch that those are dissatisfactory. But as Chuck is indicating, I mean, you guys did a lot of great things, and having been on that, I would, I'd value your input if you care to be on that subcommittee. But I, I really do, I think that it's time to look at it and see, see what needs to be addressed and what, what's going well.
Jen?
I have a question. Do, from when we were on the DAC committee, there was software where we knew where every kid lived and, and every grade and everything, do we still have that?
I don't believe so.
That was a member's personal software, I think, was it on the DAC committee?
I think so. I think that was someone that developed it themselves.
It wasn't as good as we thought it was at that point.
We were all supposed to have some new software that was supposed to do that for us, that just imploded or something.
It imploded and it wound up, in fact, I don't even know what the settlement was. I know the town was going after them for a refund, and they were fighting the, the request for a refund.
And am I correct that it wasn't the software that the DAC committee recommended, it was one that the town chose?
No, I can't remember that. I think everyone was involved in that selection committee, I think it was the unanimous choice of what they wanted, but it just didn't pan out the way they were hoping. So, but I do think the one that Mr. Neville's talking about was developed by one of the members of the committee.
I'm sorry, is this software what they used to make the lines?
No.
As we're discussing, or we're talking about?
Different.
Actually, I, I think the bus company did a lot of the work on, on putting the bus routes together and stuff like that.
They, they worked with us on it at the end to, to get through it, because the company fell apart there at the end.
So when we went into the thing, like you said, with the previous committee that you were on, we went in the last board with thinking that we had some software that was going to tell us where everybody lived, and.
Right.
Then you draw the lines like that.
It didn't work.
It didn't work out.
And, and we, they did use the major streets, like the lady said, that was, that was part of it. But a big part of that is the amount of crossing guards in the town. I think a lot of people think, you know, do this, well, to do that, you'd have to hire more crossing guards. And that's not within the board's prerogative, that's up to the town council. And I think the other thing people need to remember, someone will be on the boundary. I, I know we've had streets in the past where if you lived at number 150, you went to this school, if you lived at number 152, which is a driveway away, you went to that school. So at some point, you had that. The other thing that you need to be careful of with this subcommittee, you need to watch what you're doing, which I don't think is anything. I hear you talking about looking at boundary lines, not looking at transportation committee, because people, I think, are confusing it with daycare. The daycare people that come and speak to me, they want an exception to the transportation, not so much the boundary. If you move the boundary, they still want bus service, and as Mr. Feely said, some of the people are within a half a mile of the school. If you move the boundary, they would not get bus service. They're too close to the school, they would be walkers. But they don't want that, they want you to pick up their child and take their child to where their daycare is, and then bring their child from the school to the daycare. So it, I think as you're talking to people, you need to really watch what, what, what you think they're saying to you, because there's three or four different.
Different things.
Request groups out there.
There, there are. And, and if I may speak to that, I think the policy is adequate when it comes to people looking for exception, like you're speaking of. But when, and I do, I want everybody to be clear, I do very much understand that the boundary will be the boundary. I'm just, I think that the boundary shouldn't be a half a mile from a school, you know, would be my, my point to that. But that's why I think that more eyes than just one or two, I think, would be very well received from all.
And, and the other thing that we're trying to do, it was part of the imbalance at the Alcorn, we were trying to basically for racial balance and also for economic balance, because Alcorn was written up for that, and we had to address that. So as we were looking at lines, we were trying to make areas where now we're, we're much better balanced in terms of our racial makeup and our economic. in terms of our racial makeup and our economic status as well. So that's something to think about, too. And sometimes just going two or three blocks in one direction can really throw off the balances. If you went back and said, "Well, everyone in this neighborhood will go to this grade school," you might make that grade school racially and economically imbalanced, and then the state's on you for that. They'll make you, they'll make you change that.
And setting the lines is a moment in time, because people move in with three kids or something like that, and it changes the whole thing.
They graduate, they move. It happens.
I mean, the lines, there are always going to be lines. We may tweak them a little bit at times and stuff like that--
Correct.
--as populations shift and stuff like that. But I think what I hear you saying, the other saying, is that we want to evaluate how well do we meet our goals. And if there's things that we can do, okay, to make it better, then we should tweak it. If there's things we can't do, then we need to tell people that. And if there's things that, positive things that come out of this, it will only happen if we know what the issues are. And it sounds like Dr. Gallagher's got it well in hand in terms of getting a survey and hearing the positive thing, even if the parents hear it. You know, they liked a lot of the things. They have some questions about it, but I think we need to hear that from wider population.
The subcommittee has to be cognizant of, if you do change lines, what does it affect people that are within that change? Because you might satisfy the person that said, "I'd like to move," but then by changing the line, you've displaced three other families. They're saying, "Hey, you just moved me last year, now I'm being moved again."
And that's why I think, that's why I think it has to be done with respect to the public, and it's why I suggest the idea of involving some PTO members that are active. But that being said, I, I'm cognizant of that, and I would value any additional input that you care to give. But I really do think, A, one is an evaluation component that does not need a subcommittee to evaluate. I think that needs the--
Report it back to us.
Right, the oversight of the Board of Ed. I do, however, think a subcommittee is in line for--
But we can create that. I don't care how we do it. We can create that without a motion. We can create a subcommittee to report back to the board, and we can, we can just do that without a motion.
Okay.
And have, and give them a time limit. And what I'd like, I think bipartisan is a good idea. If we could have two and two, that would be great. And, you know, if people are interested, let me know. I'd rather have people who have the time and are willing to do it.
Understand.
Okay. So I don't know how, if you just let me know, email me that you're interested, you want to be involved in it, and then I'll get out to you guys and assign the committee.
That's good.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Another thing, too, that we have to--
Go ahead, Peter.
--make perfectly clear to parents, not just the ones that are here. This is one of those situations, it's almost a no-win situation, no matter what we do, somebody's not going to be happy. And by looking at it openly and inviting other people to participate, at least, I hate, I can't say that word, you know, at least everybody will know, you know, that we are looking at it and doing the best you can. And as Dr. Gallagher said, if we make one family happy, the consequences of another family, and you just, I mean, if that's a trade-off, then you have to leave it as is. But, so--
I think we just have to evaluate and see where it happens, and make an honest attempt to address any problems that we see coming out of this, and make it as, the best we can. So email me and let me know what you want to do at this point in time. We have a motion on the floor. Can we, can the person making the motion withdraw it in the second as well, if you're willing to do that, we'll just--
I'm willing to withdraw, and we'll move forward with the subcommittee.
If you can get to me, I'll send it out to you folks tomorrow, okay, if that's okay. Or I can tell you tomorrow night at the meeting, one way or the other. Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
We don't have another executive session, right? Okay.
Second.
Moved by Vinnie. It's always moved by Vinnie to adjourn. And seconded by Donna. All in favor? Raise your hand. Anybody opposed?
I tried to do it downstairs today, but nobody listened to me.
Hell, nobody listens to you.